We will call the regular Board of Education meeting to order and have roll call please.
Dyke.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Frisbee.
Here.
Maycumber.
Here.
Wintering, absent.
Agenda item two is the reading of the mission statement by Director Frisbee.
Our mission is to engage, inspire, and empower students and staff in order to maximize learning.
Thank you. Agenda item three, the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, corrections, or changes?
No changes.
Okay.
I'll move to present, to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Roll call vote please.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
Maycumber.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item four, welcome the visitors for public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The Board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As Board President, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the Board to complete the full Board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the Board's authority. Please understand that we, as a Board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's Board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. We thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item five, comments by Board members and superintendent, and we'll begin with Dr. Cox.
Thanks. Reminder that our, reminder to our parents that our summer food service program provides free meals to students at Washington Elementary on Monday through Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to noon, and adults may purchase a meal for $3.50. We had staff from the Iowa Governor STEM Council who were very complimentary of our Iowa Big North program overall, and the students that led two sessions last Wednesday at the Fast Track Iowa's Future Conference in Des Moines. June's been a really busy month for teachers and administrators with conferences and workshops on content areas, technology, school improvement, et cetera. And do you want to talk about the July Board meetings?
Sure.
All right. We've got two Directors who will be gone July 17th, so for the Board, you may want to consider just canceling that July 17th meeting, and the Board President and I will confer about that between now and then, but with only three of you, we could just move it to the following week and have it in conjunction with that second meeting.
Sounds good. Okay. Thank you. Any other Board members have comments this evening? Move on to agenda item six, the teacher leadership team presentation.
So we have Marie Conklin, David Vovis, Ann Haynes here from our teacher leadership team.
Josh Johnson, High School Principal. Just wanted to introduce the teacher leaders that we had here today, and then also add to the presentation just a little bit about the learning that this group took on this year. So, year one in teacher leadership around the state for schools that are in their first year, really focus on learning. So the amount of time that we invested in conferences and workshops that began last summer has been pretty substantial in year one. I think we've had a total of at least six days as a team, full days at the AEA, three of them through the Diane Sweeney coaching model that we took on as a team, and three of them through the New York Leadership Academy, which was an extension of the TLC program for the leadership involved. So I was given an external coach by the AEA, and we had three extra full days of learning together at the AEA with that model. So there were six full days alone just at our AEA on those two things. We also took on some workshop days at Grant Wood AEA in Cedar Rapids for the Hall and Simmerall framework for coaching. So I don't know what it's added up to be. They started a Northeast Iowa Conference Coaching Group together. I think you've had at least two or three half-days with that this year, maybe four?
Six.
Six? Okay. So the amount of learning that these individuals have overtaken this year has been pretty incredible to be a part of. We know that that's an investment of time outside of the district, and that became a little bit of a, kind of a double-edged sword for us in that case. But we are excited that year two, with all that learning that we've taken in on year one, the calendar will look a little bit better. We'll be in district more, working with those teachers, and still taking on that, that lead learner role, so we will be in a lot of those different things. So I wanted to just add that part to the presentation, because they're going to go through things pretty quickly for you today. Lot of statistics, a lot of numbers that really should jump out the screen on how well we did in year one with this program. So it was exciting to be a part of, and year two's already off to a really good start, so. All right. I'm Marie Conklin. I'm one of the success coaches here. We're just going to go through, throughout the year, we used a lot of data to make a lot of our decisions and to kind of make sure that we're on the same page as our teachers, because ultimately, our job as coaches is to find out what the teachers' needs are and help them, get them met so that student needs are met. And so, once a month, we are approximately, about every thirty school days, we surveyed our staff, and we asked the same questions over and over again to kind of look for trends in what we were providing and what some of the needs were. So that's the beginning of our presentation. So this first one here, one of the big concerns at the beginning of the year was, well, are these teacher leader folks just going to walk into my classroom? Or are they going to interrupt me during my planning time? And so we wanted to get the staff voice on, is it okay if we do that? Because we would like to be able to have those opportunities to see what you're doing in your classroom, but also to have conversations with you about how we can come alongside you. And so you'll notice these two graphs, both of the trend lines are going up in terms of, if you focus on the red one, the percentages don't align 100 percent, and the reason for that is, at the very beginning, we didn't really push for 100 percent participation in the surveys, and by the end, we said, nope, we need every teacher voice. And so we emailed, talked, chased people down in the halls, hey, we need your input on our survey, this is really important, we value that. And so that's why, if you look at the actual number of staff, you'll notice that at the beginning of the year, we were at about 35 staff that were okay with us just popping in during a prep time, and by the end of the year, we were up to 55. And in terms of when they're teaching, we started the year at 56, and by the end of the year, we were at about 72. Go ahead. So these are, this is the number of teachers who are actually in what they considered a coaching cycle. In terms of the term coaching cycle, we're still in the process of what exactly that can entail, because it can be so many different things. But in the very first month, we had about 15 people. By the end of the year, we had 55 staff members that had experienced or gone through some form of collaboration with a coach. That number was a shock to all of us. I think this first year, we were told at the very beginning trainings that you'd be just doing a lot of relationship building. You really got to get your staff to just build those relationships, and then that'll let them in. But our staff has been super receptive and wanting to know what they can do to better their student achievement. The, because relationship building was a big thing of what we were told we would do, we thought we should monitor that. So by the end of the year, we had several staff who had like noticed that what we were doing is relationship building. This number is lower than what we, as coaches, perceived, and we'll get to that a little bit later, because we did keep track of kind of our side of things, so that we had some comparative data on what were we consciously doing and what was the staff perceiving. So the other one is reflective conversation, that was a huge part. Josh mentioned Hall and Simmerall. That's just, Hall and Simmerall's philosophy is becoming a self-reflected person, and everything that you do, self-reflecting. And so how can we carry that over into when we're working with staff? And it allowed us to see where staff landed on a continuum to help us to better understand how maybe to come alongside them. These were just times where we either observed or implemented something with a staff member, and again, what you're going to notice through all these, I'm not going to go through each of them, is that the trend lines for each of these are all going up, which is what we want to see. More staff got involved from the beginning of the year till the end of the year. Go ahead. So this was technology. That one went down slightly, and we don't know necessarily why, but none of us did have a focus. A lot of other teacher leader programs had like a tech integrationist, and we already had that here. So we, I'm hoping that means that they knew that we had other people in the district that could fill that need so that we could focus on some of the other things. Classroom management was the other one, and then resources and data collecting in the classrooms. Again, all of the trend lines were going up. Go ahead. So this is the other, the last thing that we looked at, is we gave the option for no interaction. Did staff not interact with you on the teacher leader team in the last 30 days? The good news is, the trend line went down. By the end of the year, we only had about seven staff that said that the teacher leader team never interacted with me in any way, shape, or form. So to kind of, on the other side of that, we, as coaches, kept track of every single interaction that we had with a staff member. And we did it in a spreadsheet like this, and we ranged our interaction on a scale of one to five. So was it a relationship building, something that we had consciously done to build that relationship, or was it like a full-blown collaboration slash coaching cycle? And we made sure, we set a team goal that we interacted with every staff member a minimum of 15 times the entire school year. And I believe we met the goal. So that was very exciting for us. It may seem like, well, 15 interactions, that can't be that hard. It was a lot. So, yeah. Then we, another part of our teacher leader term is our model teachers. One of the big hurdles that many other districts had to jump over is making sure that we utilize our model teachers effectively. We have 14 model teachers, and one of the things we did about mid-year was, as part of our survey, we said, hey, we have these model teachers, would you like to go observe them? And if so, what can we do to cover your classrooms so that you can go and not only observe a practice, but also then reflect with that, with that teacher on what are the things you saw that you liked, didn't like, wanted to learn more about, et cetera? And so after we put that question on the survey, that opened the door a lot more. One of our future goals is to figure out what are some more ways that we can get our model teachers involved in this whole process. So again, that's just another reflection piece that they would do with the model teachers. So at each building, we, what we did varied. And so the, I'm going to have David give another sheet that we have that's not on here. Part of what we did was we worked with teachers on different things at different levels. One of the last surveys, or the last survey that we sent out, we asked the teachers, what are the benefits you saw of the teacher leadership program? You know, was, did you think it was valuable that we've, that we've done this? And so David is just passing out, it's a one-page list. We kind of took all of the responses and put them down to one page, just on what are the things that teachers appreciated about what we did, what are the things that they could see themselves utilizing in the future? And so some of the things we did at the elementary was, we implemented something called PRESS, which is a reading intervention, and we saw students' reading fast scores go, go up. It was, it was awesome to see teachers come to the coaches' room, super excited after our last fast testing, because they, they had taken some interventions and had, were able to focus in on what they needed to do, and because they did that, they saw results. We worked on, one of my specific goals was really incorporating our 21st century skills into learning, especially at the elementary, and just what do those skills look like and how can we integrate them into our core classes? So I did a lot of work with that then, as well as a lot of different behavior management strategies, both for individual students and for classroom management. We had, our other two coaches at the elementary did learning lunches, so that was at whatever the topic was in PD, here's some more information, or we'll go deeper into a subject. And then we had some teachers that said, you know, I know I have a lot of long transitions in my classroom, and this was at the lower elementary, what can I do to reduce that to gain instructional time? So we went in and we talked through that teacher, and we looked at how to reduce transitions with our little ones to maximize the time that we have with our kiddos. So at the middle school, a lot of the, there are some similarities with the classroom management, looking at interdisciplinary units. We helped make sure fast testing got done at the fifth grade level, and then looking at other interventions that we can do for academics. So David is going to come talk a little bit more about the high school, since that's where he was mainly at, and what they did. Before he does that, I want to say, one of my greatest joys was just seeing the PBIS inner, the framework really come together and to start to see unification with the two elementary buildings, and also just to, to see teachers invested in how we can solve problems to better our behaviors. It's just been a joy to come alongside the teachers and see that improve.
As Marie said, I'm David Vovis. Primarily, my time has been spent at the 512 Building, mostly at the 912 Building. And so throughout the year, we've had lots of different opportunities to collaborate. First of all, it's been a great honor and thrill to get to work beside so many different teachers and to get to learn from them. When I think back about why I applied for this position, I think back on that I saw this as the greatest opportunity for myself in learning professional development from my colleagues and from my peers, and to be able to make those connections from one classroom to another. And that has definitely expanded my knowledge, and then hopefully, I'm trying to include that knowledge as I'm collaborating with multiple teachers. To be able to walk into eighth grade FCS classrooms, maybe walking into a high school science classroom, and then to an instrumental music classroom, to an A classroom, the day is never, ever the same. And so as I reached out to Lorraine at one point throughout the year, I mentioned that I know you guys are drawing people to shadow, and if you ever want to come in, you don't have to wait until you want to shadow one of us, I, or I will at least speak for our team, feel free to come and shadow and see what our day is like, because it is always changing. But some of the things that I've gotten to do throughout the course of this year, I took an AEA professional development course with two of our content-specific teachers, and then we went back into the classroom and we implemented a document-based writing strategy. And so we did a little bit of teen teaching, we also did some reflection along the way. In another classroom, I did some more team teaching with an agriculture teacher, and we were able to kind of develop some new proficiency scales, and we looked at the 21st century. We also helped pick out some of his standards from the content-specific area, and we wrote a proficiency scale for that. So each kid, when they were working on their individual project, we were able to grade in two different ways, one for the 21st century, and then also one for their standard related to their content-specific area. In another classroom, I worked in a foreign language, and that was also very, very fun. We did books together, and again, we did a little bit of co-teaching, mostly it was reflection in the planning and the grading. So we switched over from a traditional grading to a standard-based grading aspect in that classroom for the fourth quarter, and that change occurred through our collaboration. And so that was a lot of fun, and also we tied in a little bit of history. We gave each person a personification from the Holocaust, and so they were reading a autobiography from someone, and we had been in contact with that person as well. So another good opportunity for our students, but then at the end of the book, the students also figured out if their person survived or if they perished in the Holocaust. So it was, it was a good transition for the kids to be able to see and to really bring all those ideas to life. Some of the other topics, more broadly talking about it, we have worked on proficiency scales at the high school with 21st century skills, and has worked as a success coach quite a bit with monitoring our MTSS time, as well as our Smart Lunch time, making sure that the kids are using that program very, very well, and being able to respond to the needs that they personally have as individuals when teachers are calling them. We've also been able to take a look at, some of my work has been also with Project 18 and with the Tiny House, and working with that team when they got back, and kind of developing some of the ideas and philosophies that could possibly go around that, and some community partnerships. And then also, will you go back one more? And just looking at instructional time, sorry. My favorite thing that I got to do this year, probably one of my favorites, sorry, there's many of them. But one of the teachers said, can you just come in and give me some feedback? And as a coach, like, you're not evaluative, and so I said, I don't really feel comfortable walking in and being able to give you that feedback, but I said, I can come in and I can transcribe your class, or your class periods. So for four different periods, I went in, I recorded the lesson, and then I transcribed that word by word and broke it down second by second. And so I looked at what percentage of the class time was spent doing this activity, what percentage of the students were engaged, and what percentage of the students were talking at certain times within that class period. And so as the year went on, I kept tracking that, that was our primary, or sorry, our baseline data, those four recordings. And then we had a discussion about that. We did some instructional things, collaboration as well, regular discussions weekly. And then by the end of the year, it was interesting, because his students came to him and said, you know, we're noticing something a little bit different in what's happening in class. And so he shared with the class then at that point, one of the things that we're doing is I'm working with Mr. Vovis, and we're trying to reflect on some things that I'm doing. And so that was really neat for me, able to see that the students were really taking in, as well as what the teacher was, of how our communication and how our collaboration was benefiting their achievement. So it's been a great privilege, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask away. Ann Haynes will now share some of her duties as the success coach.
I'm in kind of a unique position, because this last year, I was a halftime coach, halftime special ed teacher. So I had a lot of responsibilities in special ed, as well as being a coach. And I got an opportunity to be involved in all of those, almost all those learning opportunities that took me away too, as well as be a halftime special ed teacher. So I was shuffling around. I was a PBIS coach, which I'm going to talk about later, our middle school endeavor. So I'll give you a little more information about that. I spent quite a bit of time on coaching middle school PBIS. And then I also worked on, on the Smart Lunch, as David was talking about. I personally believe Smart Lunch is our biggest opportunity, and we have not yet met what could be, what it could be. And so we're continuing to work on, what are we doing? How are we making sure students are utilizing it to the best ability? And I've been working a lot with all teachers. I probably talked to 20 teachers, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, that have called students, and who came, what kinds of problems. And then Mr. Wolf and I actually try to address every student that does not attend and chat with them about those sorts of things. But there are lots of other opportunities about Smart Lunch, and we're going to look for multiple ways. I did involve myself in some coaching, but just because of those time limitations, wasn't the kind of time to do coaching, and I'm really excited, thanks to the Board and to the administration. This next year, I'll be a full-time success coach, middle school, high school, and I'm really looking forward to that. Do you have any questions for the entire team? We're opening it up to... Oh. I'm supposed to let you know that we already have 58 teachers that would like to be involved in coaching cycles next year, and that is pretty incredible. That just is a testament to how they see this whole program working for them. Okay, now I'm opening in questions.
So all of these graphs, right, the red line is the number, and the blue line is the percent?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for the data. I mean, that helps, you know, really put in kind of perspective of how things went for the first year in the graphs, and, you know, a visual representation of those things. That was good. And then the list here, you know, that helps us kind of see what kind of feedback we get too. What kinds of critical pieces of feedback did you get, and how are we changing that next year? What were some examples of that?
We do have several things that we have to review and reflect on that came out. Some of us did go and talk to teachers that had comments for us to find out, and really our honest comment is, hey, we can't change and get better unless you share with us and are willing to let us know and reflect. There was some misunderstanding exactly what role we have. One of the things we decided is we couldn't be a sub. If we would have allowed that to happen, to be a sub in classrooms, we would have subbed all year. And so, and there was some misunderstanding about that. But there, and there are some other things that people would like us to work on, and you know what? This is our first year. We have a lot of growth. I mean, I think that we were well organized as a group, we were passionate about what our mission was, and I think that lots of this data speaks to that. But, you know, every reflective person knows that there's room for growth, and we're certainly going to look for ways that we can make it better next year.
Well, and the trend lines, I mean, obviously reflect, you know, that positive impact over the years.
Yeah.
On all of those.
Another thing we talked a lot about, and this is a lot of internal conversations with the team, so the admin team and all of the coaches met every other Friday. So we got together and had a lot of discussions about kind of the next step moving forward. We have some critical discussions coming up as a district admin team in terms of aligning our mission and vision and our plan to get there, and some of those next action steps, and kind of visual representation of how everything fits together. We're having those conversations as an admin team. The TLT team is out on, kind of on the front lines on some of those things, hearing that, you know, how does all this stuff come together? So I know that's a critical conversation that we need to have, we're starting to have that. And that's feedback from teachers, that's feedback from coaches to administrators, so that's all kind of been a good conversation to have. It's brought more people to the table for that conversation, which is a crucial one, so that's been a good, a good thing too. I would say that's been the biggest challenge as administrators, working with them. You now have a lot of visionary people, a lot of motivated people at the table to get that work done. It's been refreshing. So I think it's a huge challenge, but at the same time, it's going to be an important conversation, so that'll be good too. I don't know if that's critical necessarily, but it's definitely something that'll be coming.
With the program basically being in its infancy, I think it's a little bit like getting a new operating program. There's all those benefits that you're unaware of, but it's just going to take a little while for everybody to get used to it and realize how to operate it and how to use it to its full capability.
Yeah, using our model teachers. We have 13 of them next year. We tapped into them pretty good with some different things, book study, had some meetings, but we can use them much more than what we have this year.
And I'm sure just overcoming some of the intimidation because of lack of understanding of how it operates is just in itself taking a lot of time that hopefully next year, you won't have to, I won't say waste that time, but that time can be spent on something more progressive than just that level.
We've talked a lot about our onboarding process for new employees next year, and we'll have a long, large list of those. We have a high need for beginning mentor teachers. So Marsha and I will be working on putting together a better mentoring program for the district, bringing that to the TLT team, and that'll be a really important part coming up next year. We have, I think of our 18 new people, 10 to 12 of them are first years, right? Something like that? Which is really exciting.
Thank you all for taking on a job that, to take on a job that doesn't have one, two, three, four, five, six steps, you don't have a roadmap, basically. You're writing the roadmap as you go, is a challenge in itself, and then to be successful with it in your first year is outstanding. Thank you.
We'll follow up and say, I'll agree that the district has picked some great people to be involved in this, and we're pleased with everything you've done and look forward to the future work as you all continue on this road for the leadership team. So thank you very much for your involvement over the last year. Again, we look forward to seeing all of the neat things that you and the rest of the staff will come up with and do to improve each other as we move forward in this process of education. So thank you. We'll move on to agenda item seven, the positive behavior intervention and supports with elementary.
So we have our two principals, Lincoln and Washington, Marsha DeVore and Kara Shannon, as well as Marie Conklin, who's an elementary success coach. So Shannon, all yours.
Thank you. I just want to start off by saying, you can sense the great passion that we have in our coaches, and I really want to just publicly thank them all, as you have done too tonight. Marie Conklin is our success coach, and you can tell she has passion for data, all the graphs and all of that. graphs and all of that.
I was so excited when you said that you created the data.
Yes. You just made her night. But what I want to just say here is you can't put numbers on the indirect support and learning that you get from these coaches. I would say, probably on behalf of myself and administrative, I've grown more professionally and personally this year than I ever have. And while they keep us accountable and just all the support they've given us indirectly, I don't know if my count on all the interactions that I've had with them is included in that staff, but if it isn't, it would definitely skyrocket, because I'm just speaking with them all the time, all day long. Marie was fortunate enough, we had the opportunity that we met weekly to go over our PBIS data, which is in the Swiss suite, which she'll go over that a little bit more here in detail. And just the opportunity that allowed for us and our students and our families and our teachers was, we went over all of the minors' behaviors that were coming in, and we had set up increments that at like three minors, what was the action step that we'd be taking with those students, with the teachers, and with the families. And she just kept that document so organized, and we were able to track that over time. We met weekly to just go over that, and it was an accountability factor and follow-through for myself, but it really in turn was a huge benefit to the kids and the families as well. So I just wanted to say a shout out to you and thank you for all that work that you do on the side. So I'll let Marie talk about the data, because that's her thing.
I already shared briefly that PBIS was a huge part of my role. So I did want to just kind of go over, part of the presentation that I'm sharing tonight is a kind of a Cliff Notes version of what we presented. The Board of Education puts a learning support conference on every year, and we were chosen this year to go present on how we use our data to guide ourselves through the three tiers of PBIS. And so I'm not going to get to the data-driven decisions that I presented there, but I just want to go over kind of what do we offer at each tier. As I was putting this presentation together, I was blown away by how much our staff invests in our kids' behaviors. We oftentimes don't think about the behavior component, we just know what happens and we might get frustrated. But we have staff that are actively seeking out ways to improve positive behavior through PBIS, and I was just blown away by the amount of time and effort that is put into the different components. So with that, we have our Tier 1. That looks different than, okay, anyway. Tier 1 is our universal tier. So these are things that are, every student has access to. They include the, go ahead and click the next. We have posters that are throughout the building. They look slightly different at Lincoln than they do at Washington. At Washington, they're a little more picture-based and less words. At Lincoln, there are quite a few more words. But this is just, here are the basic expectations in each area of our school. There's one right there for the middle school. All right. Then we have videos that we've put together for each of the areas that the kids watch at the beginning of the year and can be used throughout the year as kind of a booster to remind the kids of what the expectations are. We have, oh, not yet. We have a behavior matrix that goes home to all of our parents at the beginning of the school year with, these are expectations. The parents then sign basically a behavior contract with the student, and that is, it's been a really great tool for us, for when we have students that are violating some of the different behavior pieces, to have that conversation of, you know what? You sign this contract. And this is what that contract means, and this is just a reminder of what we expect here at our school. We have a flow chart and, that we use. The Nurture Heart approach is a, something we've implemented K-12. It's just an approach that we have in how we positively approach kids, but still hold them to high expectations. We use our Second Step curriculum. It is recommended that each teacher do that once a week. That was another part of my role as the coach with some teachers. They're not very comfortable with social skills instruction, because I heard a lot of, well, I haven't been trained in that. And so I would say, well, that's a great opportunity then for me to come alongside you, because that's my passion and that's what I, that's what I had done as a teacher. And so using that curriculum to kind of guide that. We have a student advisory group, which is at our fourth grade level. We get student feedback about the different things that we have in PBIS, and what would you like to see changed, or what were some things that you would like to earn? What are the things that you like about PBIS? Then we have our monthly teacher incentives. This was one of our awards made by Kelly Bogus. This was our Goose Award, which stood for Get Out of School Early. And it was, at the end of the day, the guidance counselor would take, cover your duty for you, so that you could do, if you had other things that you needed to do, or needed to leave your duty a few minutes early, then that was covered for you. And we did that through a staff drawing, and how that was done is we have comic cards that we hand out for positive behavior, and on each of our cards, our teachers' names are on them. And so if you're using the system, we're also rewarding you for using the system. That's part of PBIS is, we have to have teacher buy-in. And so this is a way to get teachers to hopefully, other things we had throughout the year were like gift certificates to Aromas. We had a Dairy Queen one at the end of the year. Marsha and Kara both had covering the duties. We gave them a Kit Kat bar with a, take an extra break, and Marsha or Kara will cover 20 minutes of your day. Just various things to kind of motivate staff. Go ahead. One more? As part of our Tier 1, we have a comic cart at both schools, and this is some of our kindergartners shopping at the comic cart. And on our cart has anything from tangibles, like stickers and toys and trinkets and things like that, to lunch with a teacher, or lunch with a principal, yep, lunch with a teacher. At the, at Washington, a huge seller is the pedals under the seats, so they can bicycle while they're sitting in their desk. And at both schools, the sitting on the exercise ball is a huge, I think those are almost always. And, go one more. One of the new ones that we brought this year was, we had a stash of hats, and you got to pick a staff member, and that staff member had to wear that hat for the day. So we, this was on a voluntary basis. Hopefully, we can continue to get more staff involved in this, but the kids loved picking, kind of picking on the staff members in that manner. So, go ahead. The other, so one of the big things that we were able to focus on this year more than once was a school-wide celebration, and we had two of them. One was, no, we had three of them. One was at Christmas time. That's, since that's a high time for negative behaviors, we always try to add a little something extra, so the kids had an opportunity to earn a movie. And with that, if they had an office referral, they had to come to what we called Comic Character Camp or Comic Academy, depending on the building you were in. And during that time, they met with me and Sandy Thompson at Washington. It was just me at Lincoln, and we talked through their office referral, what would have been a better choice? And then we have to role-play. And we talked through, through that, and it was very eye-opening. It was one of the most interesting things, is I had a couple of fourth graders at the end of the year who had to come because they were playing with their food in the lunchroom. And I said, okay, well, let's role-play. And they looked at me like, well, all I have to do is eat. I said, you're right. All you have to do is eat. It's kind of silly that you have to be here, but you know, you're making these choices and you know. And so it was just a great opportunity for those kids to really reflect, and then for that behavior to change. We had a toodling, which is, we taught the kids the difference between a toodle and a tattle. And a toodle is when you see someone doing something that's positive or helpful, you recognize them for that. So the kids filled out little slips about what they saw their classmates doing. We saw a significant drop of behaviors, and that was in February, when we had the kids focusing on what are the positive things that we're seeing in our building with our peers? I think that's, all right. Tier 2 is if a student, once a student has received three office referrals, then we consider them for Tier 2. And so within Tier 2, our biggest component is our check-in, check-out. And at the different buildings, the check-in, check-out form looks similar. The only difference is, is this is our K-2. You'll see it has smiley faces, is a smiley face, a straight face, and a sad face. And then if you go to the next one, it's a 2, 1, 0. And that's, we pick four behaviors, one for each cornerstone, and we really focus in on what are the things that we want you to work on, and what are we watching for? And then they meet with a different teacher in the morning and in the afternoon to check in and to check out with them on how their day was going. This is a, this is one of our go-to strategies for Tier 2. Sometimes, some of those students just like that extra accountability of having that, the piece of paper, but some of them also just really like that relationship with a second person that's outside of their classroom. Go ahead. So they, we also, if check-in, check-out isn't working, we might do some modifications. So we might have a midday check-in. We might add an incentive. If there's a specific skill maybe that they're missing, we might have them in for two recesses or to go over and practice that skill. So we call that our Sage Groups. And we really want to get at that performance deficit versus a skill deficit. So is it that they don't know it, or is it just that they know it, but they choose not to do it? This is our, we're a hot ed program. One of the things we noticed was that our, we had a lot of tardies. And that was a component we hadn't been monitoring with Swiss before, our data collection system, and we started monitoring it this year. And we had a lot of kids who were not on time to school. And so our school counselor started this hot ed here on time every day, and it was our top, I want to say 10 kids. They had a little check-in form with the counselor, and she, if they had five consecutive days, they got to join her and their family on Wednesday morning for a breakfast. And so what we, the reason we chose to go that route is what we realized at the elementary is a lot of times, the reason kids are late is because it's their parents' fault, not theirs. And so we didn't want to necessarily punish the kids, but we wanted to encourage those positive behaviors. So we had one family in particular that, you know, they always, we made sure to get, Mom, to get us here on time, you know? So they were very excited and in turn, holding the entire family. Oh, with that, Julie Costana, one of our instructional assistants, helped a ton. She kind of went above and beyond sometimes with the breakfast, and was, we were like, oh, how are we going to hold up to that standard the next week? Because she would bring in like scrambled eggs and bacon and all kinds of stuff. So just totally invested and excited to run with, providing this incentive for these families. Go ahead. One more. So if a student continues, so with that check-in, check-out form, we monitor their behavior daily. If a child falls below 80% for a considerable amount of time, then we move them on to Tier 3. And Tier 3 is that really individualized plan. So we start to look at what is their function of their behavior? Are they doing things to avoid something or to gain something? And with that, we use a more individualized menu. So this is an example of a student's menu. So if they meet their goal, they can earn one of these things, the ones with the boxes. They have to earn five in a row to get that item. We also, go ahead. One more? Use this competing pathways, which is really getting at where is the behavior occurring? What are we doing to prevent it? And what are alternative behaviors that are, that are okay, that still get us at the end, the positive end result? We, the other thing that one, Josh talked about some of the training. Sandy Thompson and I went to a wraparound training, and that is literally wrapping around a child. We had one child that we did this with for the class, and it's looking at what is the big need for that child, and getting all of the agencies involved. And so this child, when we had the meetings, we had 12 people at the table. And that included at-home workers, social workers, DHS, you name it. There was probably, that child was, person was there. And it was a great opportunity for us to really look at, what are we doing inside the home and at school and outside the home, all together to help this child get their needs met? And we did this for the whole year, and we're hoping to have more students involved in that process next year, because it really gets the communication going with all of the, the needs that these kids have when they have so many different agencies involved in their life. With that, there is data that goes along with it that really looks at the specific needs and strengths. It's a very strength-based program, so it's looking at what do they do well, and then what are their needs, and how can we, how can we assist them with that? So with that, go ahead. We have the triangle, the PBIS triangle, and our goal is to be at 80% in the green, no more than 15% in the yellow, and no more than 5% at the red. And so for Washington, we met our, our green goal, and we were a little top-heavy. And that just meant we had some pretty significant behavior concerns at that upper level. By no means, by no means means that we weren't addressing those, it just means we had a lot of kids that, that had some struggles. So we had a lot of intensive plans going. We ended up going through a lot of the identification process for IEPs. Those aren't just IEP kids. Some of those kids can be kids that have an intensive plan, but the intensive plan is working, so they don't need special ed services. Go ahead, the next one. At Lincoln, whoops, go back one. At Lincoln, we were at 73 in the green, 14 in the yellow, and 13 in the red. So again, pretty top-heavy. And part of, one of the, I guess one of the other big changes this year was we, we didn't have a great way to keep track of our majors and our minors. We had tried several different things over the last four years, and I think this year we finally have it. And so now our big thing is teaching, teaching or coaching our teachers on what really constitute a major, what should be sent to, for what behavior should a child be sent to the office, and what do we expect you to staff manage? And I will say, we had a lot of first-year teachers at Lincoln, and part of my job as a coach was, was coming alongside them and kind of coaching them through, you know what? This is really, this is really a staff-managed behavior. And so I think that attributes a lot to why our 80% mark didn't get met at Lincoln. It was just, it was a learning curve for new teachers. So that is kind of PBIS in a nutshell at the elementary. So if you have any questions, but hopefully that clarifies everything.
How much time spent coming up with acronyms for things with...
Elemental PQR, yeah. Between special ed and PBIS, I don't know. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to Agenda Item 8, we have the PBIS team ramp-up for the middle school.
Good evening, everyone. Rick Gable, middle school principal. I'd like to say ditto.
You're done?
Yeah. Thank you. The terminology and the phraseology, it's going to be very much the same. I guess the point I want to be, and to be the broken record, is to, again, acknowledge what our teacher leaders and our success coaches are doing, because although the, you know, elementary had a nice report and good information last year, dedicating Marie, dedicating Anne to the processes and the things that we're doing to help support kids is really moving us forward tremendously. And then the work that all the team, the entire teacher leadership team is doing is, I mean, we hit a home run with the people that we put in that position. So kind of like Kara said before, thanks a lot for the work you guys do. Anne's going to talk more specifically about the data that's, excuse me, the information that's on, on the screen behind me. I want to touch base real briefly. We still, we have two systems that we're using yet. We use Power School. We're keeping track of all of our office referrals for attendance issues and for discipline issues. And then we have PBIS, which uses the Swiss data. The Power School data will give us more of a trend line from where we've been, and we can see some of the trends and where we're at. So I think those are the things, that's something we're very interested in right now, and we can say, yeah, we had more referrals this year, but we had a full grade too. All right? So our, by, according to Power School, we had 80 more office referrals than what we had last year, or excuse me, than the average that we had the last four years. That doesn't sound too bad, but then it seemed like I spent a lot of time in a couple of grade areas, maybe more time. Well, then you look at the differences between the two grades, yeah, we had significantly, we had more issues. 63% of our office referrals were working with the fifth and sixth graders when they have less than half of our students, our student population. So we know where we need to spend our time, and the PBIS data would show the exact same thing. So those are, that's the main takeaway that I can get, and you'll see more about that, more of that specific data in the board report that I'll put with you. But we're going to have to transition more to the PBIS, the Swiss data that we get, because that's really where it's going to pick up. Our systems are becoming much more streamlined and much more aligned, the deeper, the more we get into the PBIS systems that we're able to do. And they did, we turned the corner later in the year. I mean, we had some discussions, there were some problems that were happening, but boy, we really turned the corner, and I thought we finished on a really strong note. And just, the teachers did a fantastic job of dealing with the new environment and helping students along the way that they did. So, Anne, go ahead.
One should never have to follow Marie, who is a PBIS guru and has had lots of experience. But I'm going to give you our PBIS report from the middle school. The first thing is, we had several positives. We did implement this year some monthly PD on PBIS. We reviewed the expectations matrix, which I'm going to tell you in a little minute, it was brand-new, because we had a new building, and all the expectations had to be altered, revisited. I mean, we spent lots of time making sure that those expectations... I mean, we spent lots of time making sure that those expectation matrix fit the spaces we now have at the new middle school. We had a new flow chart. One of the things that we had at the beginning of the year is way too many of the behaviors were handled by the sending the child to the office. And so we developed a flow chart that we, I mean, we worked on it, we revised it, we worked on it again, and finally became one that we could live with. And then we had PD on that. And we had PD with our teachers, we had PD with our associates. Everybody knew which behavior should be handled by the teacher and how that should be done, and which behavior should be handled by the office. Then we had a sharing of data. We had a lot of SWISS data. We got better at figuring out what data would be important for teachers to have. And we shared that on an ongoing basis. So they knew the data behind that using the SWISS data we get. We had a, finally, after we got everything in line on our expectations matrix, we had a really nice expectations academy. It was too late in the year, unfortunate, I mean, wasn't the first couple of days like it should be. But the first couple of days, we were swimming. We're in a brand-new building when we'd had very little time to be here and whatever. So we got our posters hung. Oh, we skipped by the Effective Tardy Academy. Scotty Hagensek, our elementary, middle school counselor, took on the fifth and sixth grade tardy problems. And she started tracking those and talking to kids and then having an academy and was very effective. The tardies in fifth and sixth grade dropped dramatically with her efforts there. Got the C-Bucks door run. And one of the nice things was it was totally staffed by high school students. Part of being connected to the high school is we could have high school students over and interacting with students. I'll work a little better this next year because of the schedule sink a little better. Fifth grade started lunch at 11:00 and our high school student could get here at 11:14. There was a lot of anxious fifth graders waiting for the C-Buck cart to open. Challenges, having a new building was a huge challenge for us to get started. Like I said, it took us a long time to get the expectations matrix ready and going and The addition of the fifth grade to this building was another challenge. Additional people that were handled a little differently at the middle school than they were at the elementary. Big challenge was I was the new coach. And I have no PBIS experience before I started this job, nothing. And so there was a learning curve and it was pretty steep. And I didn't know the staff when I came over here. I didn't know the procedures. I was trying to update the, what was going on in a new building. And so it took us a while to get started. And I was just half-time. So that was a challenge. Actions for 17, 18-year, we have lots of room for improvement at PBIS at the middle school, but that really hasn't been new. I mean, it wasn't just new because of this building. We had some room for improvement before that. I like to call a spade a spade. So we had some room for improvement. And so we're working on it. We are creating a PBIS handbook. Marie has created one for the elementary. And we are going to start with that and see if we can use that as a centerpiece for training at the, at the middle school with staff, especially since we have a lot of new staff members this year. I will be taking the lead on all tiers. She just explained to you what the tiers are. And our tier one is pretty successful now, but our tier two and three have lots of room for improvement, tier two some, and tier three quite a bit. And I will be working a lot with all of those. We need to create incentives for staff participation. We have a lot of staff members that work really hard on it. We have some that are resistant to using PBIS. We want to increase the diversity, you know, of rewards so that kids are more excited about it. And that's something we started out with. We didn't do a really good job of that. And we're going to, we're going to do a much better job of making that card so exciting kids will want to behave to get those C-Bucks. And we're going to institute, as part of tier two, SAGE groups, which Marie talked about, which are social academic intervention groups, which Scotty will be running. Data pulled from SWISS. As she said, tier one is universal interventions. They're used with all students. And they are just a matter of getting C-Bucks or having think sheets or majors or minors and tracking that. In each of these tiers, when we do a TFI, which is a tiered fidelity inventory, we like reflect on how we're doing as a group and then determine in about 15 criteria in each team. In tier one, we're at 77% fidelity and 80 is what they would like you to be at. So we felt pretty good about our tier one efforts. We do have lots of room for improvement, but we felt pretty good about it. Tier two is for at-risk behavior kids with the interventions like check-in, checkout, or modified check-in, checkout. That is used for kids with at-risk behaviors. And that one, we had 54% fidelity. We have a lot of room for growth there. We had things that were partially implemented and some, well, mostly are partially implemented or fully implemented. And then tier three, students with serious or chronic behaviors. This one, we only did 28%. Something I was not involved in and, and that showed up in the data. It was just, we don't have a system in place for that. And that is something we're going to work on this summer. Here's our triangular data, which is the same as what Marie just presented. These are based on majors. Majors are referrals that are handled by the office. And that's where the triangular data comes from. We had 465 students in the middle school. And we had 580 majors during the year. Things that required them to go to the office to have, taken care of. Students with zero to one majors, we had 367% of those students, or 78.92, almost 79% of our students. And as Marie told us, 80% is our target. So we felt pretty darn good about that. Students with two to five majors, we had 66 students, which is 14.19%, 15% is your target. So we felt pretty good about that. And students with six or more majors, we had 32 students, which is 6.88%. And 5% is our target. So those looked pretty good, our majors and the way they fell in. Okay, I think we have, what was I going to say beyond that? I don't know. I'm really excited about having more time to spend with it, more time to spend with Marie, who obviously has this down to a science in making this first-class thing. Because research shows it's very effective if done correctly. Anyone have any questions? I'd be glad to try.
So 580 trips to the office, you know, that's about, what, a little over three a day?
Yeah.
Something around there.
Right.
So with the new Dean of Students position coming in, is that somewhat going to help address some of that? Is, how else are we, I mean, how much of that time is that taking of you and, you know, the, the office folks that, obviously we want to look to reduce that number? Is that going to address some of that time that's spent, I assume?
Okay, I'm just going to say that it would depend upon our other efforts to keep, because the, if it's an office referral, it's based on the behavior. So if steps we take reduce the number of times that the behavior says it falls in the flow chart, then yes, it will be.
Sure.
If they talk to Keith, the Dean of Students, and that's the way it has to go, then that still is a major. It just means that.
Sure.
Maybe that they'll have more time, maybe they'll be able to spend more time talking to parents and look for suggestive ideas. And honestly, if we get our tier two and tier three in place, hopefully we'll have strategies where we work with kids and help them do a better job.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah. But a major is a major. It's dependent upon the student's behavior.
Just like three, over three a day? I mean, it just seems like a lot to me to have to, you know, how much, how much time per instance would you say that involves? You know, your time, Rick, or somebody in the office? Sometimes a minute, sometimes an hour? Yeah.
Yeah. It all depends on how major the major situation is. But having, having Anne around more to observe and work with and coach, and having Keith Ryder, our Dean of Students, there and available, and myself there and available more often between the three of us, I mean, that's, that's a lot of extra time, support that we have to help the kids in the classes and also then to work with the teachers. The more the teachers can take care of in their classroom, the better off they're going to be. Because they all lose, they all lose some ability to have control, relationship, you know, of the setting whenever they have to send a student out. We need to keep them in class as much as possible.
This is a parallel to what Marie said, maybe you didn't catch it, is part of our training on flow chart is to let teachers know what things they should be handling in the classroom. Because if they're handling things in the classroom and maybe filling out a minor form, maybe just having a discussion, then they're not sent to the office. And our majors did go down throughout the year as they got, as the training was more explicit. When you have this situation, you should be having that conversation. You should be handling it in your classroom. Less kids went to the office.
You look at these numbers every month by coming? Is that how you analyze these? Is you look at these every month? Or is it?
At least every, every two weeks, we're, in our tier two teams, we're analyzing what's, what are the trends? What's happening with kids? Where are we at with number of referrals? Yeah.
I think it might be interesting midway through the year, next year, since we're getting a Dean of Students, to maybe just kind of have a, rather than waiting till this point of the year to get an end of the year, just to see how we're doing, a mid-year checkup.
I think that that would be good to give you some idea of as we put these things in place with Keith Self and with Rick having more time and, and just being over here, can we make this better?
Yes. And if there's anything then at the board to do at that point, rather than waiting for a whole other year.
Right.
January would be a good time to.
Yeah.
Catch up.
If you tell me it's on the agenda, I'll be here.
Nancy? Nancy? You need to.
Yep, come on up. Tell everybody you're Nancy.
I'm Nancy Simerson. I'm a substitute teacher in this district. And so I have substituted in this building. I did not know what you did. I've never known. So truthfully not. But this, no, really, I've seen you around, but I didn't know. I thought she was a special ed teacher. But this creating a handbook for your new staff, but also for your substitutes. Because I had to repeatedly keep asking, what are these majors and minors for this particular district? And finally, toward the end of the year, I saw the flow chart. So I did not know what I should be doing. So you've got new substitutes in this district every year. And somehow you should call them in for, I don't care, an hour or two. But you should really go over this because we come in here and we do not know. I'm learning from this meeting. I had to come to this meeting to learn a lot of things about both Lincoln and here that I, I didn't really pick up during this year, to be truthful. So I'm glad that you realize you need to have this handbook, but, but for us as well.
I will say that that was a big thing for us on the flow chart, was getting that flow chart in place. And I'm going to be really honest, I didn't think about substitutes. But I was a strong proponent in the fact that we needed to train every single associate about what that flow chart looked like. And remind them that when there's not a teacher there, they're the, they are the staff member. They should be handling this according to the flow chart, just like the teachers do. So I will, I appreciate that because I have never thought about having something for subs. And I think that that's real important. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item nine, the Iowa Assessments Presentation. We have Marcia DeVore.
Good evening. Every year about this time, you hear from someone about how our assessment data has looked over the past year. And so this year, the report is slightly different. In the past, you have heard about long-range goals and short-term goals in areas in, of math, reading, and science. Those were all part of the Expectations of No Child Left Behind. Over this past year, we've been transitioning into a new plan, Every Student Succeeds Act. And as the state of Iowa has been preparing their plan and putting that implement, into implementation, they have scaled back on some of the requirements that they asked of districts in order to make sure that the processes and procedures that they had in place worked before they asked districts to invest in all three content areas at all grade levels. So this year, the state asked each school district to turn in a goal related to elementary literacy. And so the Charles City goal, long-term, so looking out about five years, was that by the end of the 2021 school year, 85% of students in grades K through four would be at or above benchmark on the FAST CBM reading assessment. The FAST reading assessment takes a look at students' words correct per minute. We know that this is a great screening tool and an indicator of the success that students might have in more rigorous assessments. And so that was our goal there. Went back up, just one care, thank you. So taking that long-term goal and really breaking it down, we took a look at where we were at. So in the spring of 2016, 60% of the K-4 students in Charles City were at or above benchmark on the FAST CBM. So our goal, in order to reach that 85%, we thought, you know what? Let's, let's hit 70% over this next school year. We think that that's, that's a good goal. So that was where we, we looked at. All right, so this is our spring data from Washington. And you can see that the large blue graph is 60% of the students met benchmark. And it shows you then the AEA average of 62 and the state of Iowa average at 66. I'd also like then to kind of show you how we dug into this data a little bit deeper. I really want to go up and like point to this graph because I call it a chutes and ladders graph. It's great data when we start to look at it, but you need to kind of understand where it is. So I'm going to speak really loudly and kind of step back a little bit. If you look at the left-hand side, that gives us the numbers of where we started in the fall. So we had 52% of our students in the fall meeting benchmark. And as you see, the students who move across those 146 students, we grew that to 175 students in the winter testing. The group that goes down, there's 14 students that went down. Those students went from meeting benchmark in the fall to not meeting it in the winter. But we've got this great big group down below in the, in the pink, 131 students not meeting benchmark in the fall, but 43 of them did in the winter. So we see them moving up. And so then we've got that percent that stays across the bottom. So we felt really, really excited in the winter. We saw a nice bunch of growth happening there. Then as you move from winter to spring, and I don't, the projector's cutting off our part there, you can see we did have a little bit of a slide down. We still moved a large number of our students in proficiency across to the spring. But we did have about 28 students who slipped down back under benchmark. And so Kara and our instructional coaches and I dug into that data a little bit deeper. And what we discovered is that about 20 of those 28 students were kindergartners. And when we looked at why those kindergartners weren't meeting benchmark, it came down to one sub-test, and it was sight words. And of those 20 students, a vast majority of them, I think Kara said, maybe 50 to 75% of them were within one to two points of the sight word. So we were really able to dig in and see, okay, what happened there? And so, you know, if you back those numbers down, if we'd been able to move those kids just a couple of more sight words, three or four more sight words, that would have hit us at that 70%. We would have been able to meet that. So we know the steps that we need to do as a grade-level team in kindergarten, things that we want to be working at to make. things that we want to be working at to make sure that we're getting those kids prepared. So this is the Lincoln data, so we're looking at our third and fourth graders. At Lincoln, we had sixty-four percent of our students proficient at the end of the school year. That's above the AEA average of sixty-two percent and just below the Iowa average of sixty-six percent. And again, this chutes and ladders graph shows you very similar kind of a picture at Washington, at Washington. It's okay. So again, starting in the fall, where we started with fifty-five percent of our students meeting benchmark. Then in the winter, moving it to sixty percent of our students meeting benchmark. And then in the spring, we had sixty-five percent of our students meeting benchmark. Felt really good about the number of kids that we moved up from fall to winter, we had about twenty-three that we moved up. Really kind of excited about the, the seven that went down. We went and we dig, dug into those seven a little bit more. Two of those seven students were homeschooled students. So we have to offer this assessment to those homeschool students. So two of us, when we looked at the five students that we were providing the instruction for at Lincoln, again, we were able to say, okay, we were within like three to four words per minute with these students. So again, they were close. And so we know that we really want to pay attention to some of our progress monitoring that we do as we come into assessment time to really make sure we're giving those kids who are on the bubble the right boost that they need. So, and again, that would be about that five percent that we would have needed to, to move us up to that seventy percent. So feeling like we're in good, good company. The FAST assessment does go through to K through sixth grade. So this year, for the first time, the fifth and sixth graders here at the middle school did take the test. They started in the winter, so we don't have a full year's worth of data. And so our teachers here at the middle school are going to get some more training on administering the test and then good interventions to use in between the testing periods. So next year, I'll have an opportunity to talk to you a little bit more about what are we seeing happening at the middle school with that data as well. All right. And so really thinking about this, we want to make sure that as we look at how we're going to continue to try and, and make progress, we want to think about what our, is our professional development plan look like. So we're going to focus on literacy and really engaging in some collaborative practices. How are we working together as a team focused around the reading workshop? It allow, a reading workshop model allows us to really individualize for our students so that we're meeting them where they're at and pushing them forward. So we think that that's going to be a really good model. The resources that we invested in over the past school year, support that. And then with the week of professional development that we had with teachers at the end of the school year, we spent three days really digging into that reading and writing workshop model. So looking at that. And then really looking at what does explicit instruction look like in that workshop model? We don't just say, go forth and read, but what, what is the specific teaching that we need to do for students there? What we like to see then is then how does this translate into Iowa assessments? And so this next set of data, which I also shared with you via email because I know sometimes to see it up on the screen is, is a challenge. We look at our third grade group and we have reading in the upper left-hand corner, math in the upper right-hand corner, and science down below. The three colors that you see, the blue shows our percent of students below benchmark, the brown shows the percent of students within proficiency, and then the yellow show our students that are at that advanced level. And the first column is our district, then again, the AEA and the state for making some comparisons. So as you look across, you can kind of see some trends with our third grade group in math and science. Pretty similar in terms of number of students that we have proficiency, we just tend to be a little bit more.
Fourth grade, Kara advanced.
Kara, can you back up one? Okay, we can try, yeah. All right. So then we then see a shift in the number of advanced students at maybe the AEA and the state level and our non-proficient students at the district level. So what we'd really like to see with our professional development plan is just bumping that, those percent of students that we have non-proficient up and then bumping that next percent into the advanced. So we know that that's our next steps. And as we see that in, moving across to the next grade levels, we see that trend continuing into fourth grade a little bit. You'll notice at science in both third and fourth grade, we, we did tend to even out. We are much more comparative to the state in those areas. And then in fifth and sixth grade, you can see again where those come out. And then at seventh and eighth grade, we start to see that, that difference between the district and state diminish. And then as we look at the high school at ninth, tenth, and eleventh. Just kind of gives you a quick overview of how our Iowa assessment data is looking. We know that as we have implemented our new math curriculum at the elementary level, we are confident that the strategies that we are implementing with that will pay benefits for us as we continue to, to implement that. And we expect that that gap that we're seeing between the district and the state at the third, fourth, fifth grade level will continue to shrink as we move forward. We also expect that same thing to happen as we implement more of the research-based strategies in our reading and writing workshop next year as well. So that'll be something that we pay very close attention to moving forward. Questions that I could help?
The benchmarks are not static throughout the year, right? They expect a level of growth and the ones that drop.
Yes, when we looked at that FAST data, it absolutely grows from beginning of the school year to the end of the school year.
Doesn't mean that they regress from where they were at necessarily.
No, it just necessarily, it doesn't mean maybe they didn't grow as much as we expected them to. Absolutely. So maybe where the expectation would be from winter to spring, that they would have grown twenty words per minute, that student maybe only grew fifteen.
Yeah.
Absolutely. Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, the Creative Placemaking Proposal. If we remember, this was tabled from the last board meeting and is back on the agenda for discussion. Dr. Cox, do you have anything you'd like to add or say about the placemaking proposal?
You know, we had the work session with Zach a month ago and he has a track record of successful projects around the state. I know that you agreed last board meeting to enter into, or to formalize the agreement with Charlie. But it doesn't prevent the board from still taking a look at what Zach and McClure Engineering could offer when it relates to the nineteen-seventy edition that we have. You know, it's a big space, it still will need to have some sort of repurposing for whatever time the, the school district chooses to vacate that. Because if no one else moves in, then we are responsible for taking that portion down if, if Charlie so desires. So if Zach could come in and put together a plan for how to creatively use that East End, you know, it could be a, a financial win for the district. And so it's something that has been requested that we talk about again here tonight. You could choose to say, all right, let's go have a, a joint meeting with the city council. Really timelines that line up for that would be at the very end of July, looking at board meetings and city council meetings and finding a free Monday evening to do that. You could also say, you know, if the city council is interested, we'd be interested in splitting it. Or you could say, no, we're, we're not interested and it's something that Charlie could do with the council if he so chooses. I think those are kind of the three options.
So if I get this, well, just want a clarification. We're talking about the seventy edition, the East Wing, that our intention is to rent or lease and utilize for central office, Iowa Big North, Cary Lane, the homeschool assistance program.
Correct.
And the gymnasium that we also intend to utilize.
Right.
And then the pool and the locker room areas.
Correct, that would be all of those spaces.
And is this during the time we, the, the initial three year we intend to lease? That the conversation with Zach would be about repurposing or additional usage? Or is this for if after the three years, we decide to not continue in that space?
It would be more geared at, at the point that we're going to depart, than what's going to happen with that section of the building. Is how I would see it. Because we are, I mean, we have a use for it, as you just outlined, for all of those spaces except for the pool.
Okay, I just wanted clarification on all of those things.
Yeah.
I, I don't personally see the need for a joint session and I chatted with a couple of city councilmen. You know, since the last meeting, they agreed with me at that point. So I mean, that, that's something that I don't think that the conversation isn't totally necessary in that format or forum at this time. I'm kind of on the same lines as Scott going through this, that I'm not convinced that we have, that we can adopt, accommodate leaving that space at this point or committing to that. I think that that conversation would need to happen if we were going to get serious about spending fifteen or twenty thousand dollars on a study on how to, to refill that space type of thing. I a hundred percent buy into the thought that if we could spend twenty thousand dollars to absolve ourselves from the cost of demolition that's involved in the lease agreement, then absolutely. I'm just not convinced that now is the time that, you know, that, that we would do that. We have a need for all those spaces. We're, we're going to virtually fill that into the building for the foreseeable future. And until we have a plan in place to go somewhere else with that space, I'm not convinced that we're going to come up with a plan to be able to fill that, address that space. Terry gave me some numbers from utility costs for the entire year for the whole building, you know, that, that we've experienced for the last year. And looking at that and looking at what our, our responsibility and the lease agreement is going to be for that, somewhere around twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars a year for us to occupy that facility. We can't replace that space, you know, right now within district for that cost. So I think it's, the way the lease agreement is written, it's extremely advantageous for us to continue there. And until that, until something changes with that, until we have a better opportunity somewhere else or we're, we're faced with a decision that pushes us to go somewhere else, it's kind of where I, I kind of convinced myself to be at this point.
And I agree with, with what Scott and Jason have both said. We're not, I'm not saying we'll never contact Zach. That, that is definitely not, we're saying we're not putting in, we're not closing the book on that completely. It's, it's a matter of timing for me, it almost feels like we're putting the cart before the horse a little bit here. We really need to assess. We haven't taken the time because I don't even think that was our consideration when we first looked at what was going to happen with the end of the building. It was not in my bank of knowledge that we would end up utilizing that end of the building as much as we had. I think at one point, we were so focused on getting this facility done and getting the students into this facility, we didn't realize that the, having that nineteen-seventies wing gave us then the additional space we needed for all these other programs that were scattered. It's a great central location for a lot of those things. It was built to house students, it was built to accommodate students. It seems right that students continue to use it at this point. We know the cost of a gym and we know, I hear it all the time from the public about you, we never have enough gym space. And that one is great space to keep. So at this time, I would like to just, we have this as reference for future and it's great to know about it so that when we do see that happening and we, we need them, that we know who to call and get the ball rolling for something.
Jim, you were one of those that wanted this on the agenda for discussion again. What do you think of the conversation so far? What do you think of the conversation so far?
Well, I can't see if we don't have to spend any money, that's going to hurt anything to me, ask if we could get media, just to hear what this guy could do for, we don't spend any money yet.
It would cost us.
I don't think we need to spend any money yet.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But I don't think it would hurt anything to listen to him, but.
We did that.
We did listen to him, yeah.
Listen to him, yeah. But he, yeah, okay. Okay, whatever.
We do have a recommendation from the superintendent. Is there any action to be taken by the board this evening? Hearing no action, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven. The North Grand Building Title Search. It appears we have an incomplete legal description and possible issues with the title. Do you have anything to add besides what's written on here, Dr. Cox?
Only that it's nothing insurmountable. But Jim Davis is here from Iowa Title and so.
If we have any questions or?
He can kind of fill in the board as to what the issue is and what the steps are to rectify that. So Jim, I'd like you to come up and.
I think we've heard of it.
What?
I think we've been made aware of it, haven't we?
Board members, individual board members have been made aware of issues a number of months ago. So how do we resolve the issues, Mr. Davis?
Well, a couple of things. First of all, thank you for, Dr. Cox, for asking me to come and visit with you this evening about this. As you know, at your last meeting, you approved this option agreement with Charlie Thompson. And on Exhibit H to the option agreement is a legal description, which is incomplete. And so then the question becomes, under Article Fourteen regarding title, what to do about the titled effects that we have here? And it lays out a number of different options that the purchaser can choose. Now, what we have here is an arms-length real estate transaction, a willing seller and a willing buyer. And we have, in our research to get a legal description for this option agreement, uncovered some titled effects. And you're correct, Dr. Cox, they are not insurmountable, but they are issues that we should address because some of them are going to take some time in order to remedy them. And like all real estate transactions, lawyers close real estate transactions. So the school board needs to retain legal counsel to help with this in order to remedy these particular issues. So I, I'm happy to, I'm going to leave it at that because I would like to take questions. And I mean, I don't know if you want me to go into any of the particular issues we've saw, we've located or hear a recommendation from me, what is your pleasure?
I think I'm interested in finding a way to solve the problem sooner than later. And if that means that we hire either ailers or, and I always mispronounce that, don't I?
Allers.
Allers.
It's okay, or a local firm.
Or a local firm or another firm from somewhere else in the state. I don't really care, just so long as whatever problems there are that date back to the nineteen. nineteen twenties, early thirties, when property was redone, we need to get the issues resolved. So, do you have a recommendation as to?
You know, we've worked with Connor at Allers Law Firm for many, many months now. He is in Des Moines, and it's not like you can just drop into the office and visit with him. It's all by telephone, so you weigh the benefit of chatting with someone in person here locally versus the guy that we've worked with, again, for months and months on this document. So, do you have a preference as a board as to which way to go, or? Jim, do you want to weigh in on this?
I can work with any lawyer that you choose. The benefit of local counsel is we spend our money here in town. And that seems like a wise choice to me. And I'm not here to tell you which particular one to choose. You had Danielle DeBauer read the abstract for the Sherman Nursery property that you purchased for the athletic complex. And so she's more than capable of remedy in these situations. But what we have is, we call it usual and customary, in that the seller of a piece of real estate is required to provide good title to the property. But on the other hand, a willing seller and a willing buyer can agree to anything. And so there's some language in Article fourteen about some of the concessions that Charlie is willing to make. And while we're at it, we need a survey. And the sooner, the better, my view. They go somewhat hand in hand. Can we, can we address these title issues without a survey? Yes. But would it be helpful so that we know exactly what we've got, and we can clarify the precise legal? Also true. So, but in every instance, the question is, is who's going to pay? On a regular basis, I have people come into my office who are selling real estate on their own, which is what we're doing. We're selling this real estate without a real estate agent, and that can happen. And so the first thing I always ask them is, who's your lawyer? And then once we determine that, I sit and try and answer all of their questions as best I can, because they're, it's probably the biggest transaction they're doing in their life, and they're nervous, and they're wanting to get it right. And so I'm more than willing to help you at this point, or anywhere along the line, come back and answer questions, so that you're comfortable, you're proceeding in the best manner on behalf of the Charles City Community School District. So, once again, I think for the reason that it's easy, if I've got something, and some of them are somewhat complex, to go up and lay it out on somebody's desk and say, here's what I see, in addition to being able to have the money stay here. On the other hand, if you choose to utilize out-of-town counsel, I do that all the time. So, I'll take whatever, you know, instruction, I mean, I'll, eventually an attorney will be contacting me to say, we need to proceed on your behalf, and then whoever they are, I'll do whatever I can to assist them.
I agree with the local counsel. I'll make a motion to direct the administration to utilize legal counsel to engage to remedy any title issues regarding the completion of that process.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the administration to engage in local legal counsel to solve the legal description and title issues with the North Grand Building.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, this probably to Jim, will this hiring legal counsel to get everything in order, is that going to take care of hiring somebody to survey it, or is that going to take another motion?
No, that, that's, that's something completely different. What we're talking about is.
Okay, so we'll go with this motion.
Yeah. What we offer in an arms-length transaction in Iowa is an abstract of title, showing the history to a piece of property. And that's what we would be dealing with simply here. Now, every abstract of title contains a legal description. The test of a legal description is, can a surveyor go out and stake it on the ground? And so, we've got a lot of these documents, like Scott mentioned, were, come from nineteen thirty-one. But there are some which, you know, came in the nineteen seventies, and I'm not casting aspersions on anything, but a lot of things were done quickly in the seventies, because there was so much aftermath from the sixty-eight tornado, that it wasn't as precise as you'd like to see. So, if we don't do it sooner, we're going to do it later, we're going to need to get a survey, because nobody's going to want to make the kind of improvements without knowing exactly where those boundary lines are.
Any other discussion on the motion at hand? Any comments from the public? Roll call vote?
May Cumber.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda Item twelve.
If I may, just for one second, this is a picture of Sister Cornelius. And I'm a product of Catholic education, and this is a ruler in her hand, and before I learned to do all this measuring, Sister Cornelius, because I'm a behavior problem, used that ruler on me quite a bit. And so, anyway, I'm still, I'm still, I'm still a behavior problem, as you all understand, even though Catholic education didn't solve it for me. So, I appreciate your understanding of that. Thanks for having me, you guys.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
I'd like to discuss this a little more, number eleven here. At this time, should we be directing somebody to hire us, somebody to survey it?
We were just talking.
I know it's a handout of greens that does a good job.
Well, that'll have to be another agenda item.
Yeah.
I mean, we should be proceeding with that thing.
Yeah.
Maybe we should get that on agenda then.
This one was only written as a title research.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
We're going to have to have that information to finish this title research.
Right.
Should get it on the next agenda.
Whenever, whenever, I'm guessing, the lawyers and Mr. Davis feel like we're ready to do that, they will let us know, and we can proceed with hiring one.
It is addressed in the, in here as well, Jim. And it is addressed in the, in the option as well, so I will show you where that's at. Yeah, thirteen.
Agenda Item twelve, the second reading of Policy seven ten point four, meal charges. This is the second reading. We have a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion to approve the second reading of Board Policy seven one zero point four, meal charges as presented.
I'll second it.
The second reading of Policy seven one zero point four has been, motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda Item thirteen, Policy five oh seven point nine, the wellness policy.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of the Board Policy five oh seven point nine wellness policy and waive the second reading as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the first reading of Board Policy five oh seven point nine wellness policy and to waive the second reading as presented. Any other discussion? Any questions from the public? Roll call vote?
Walker.
Yes.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda Item fourteen, the Labor Management Committee.
We had a negotiations meeting, and we discussed this. The support staff have asked basically for a number for their team and a number for our team. Lorraine and I and Dr. Cox discussed this. We would like to recommend that there be four people and on.
Each side?
Yes, on each side. The school's team would consist of Dr. Cox, a board member, a community member, and a teacher. And then the others could put together their group as they would like to.
So, the recommendation is to direct the administration to share.
Correct.
Our response with the education associate.
I'll make a motion to direct administration to share the board's response with the CCC SVESA.
I'll second it.
Agenda Item fourteen has been moved and seconded as recommended to share our response. And that would be four people, as Robin talked about. Any other discussion?
Just that, a reminder that, that two sides have to reach an agreement, so.
This is our first.
If this is approved, then I will share that with them, and they may come back and say, well, no, we want a different number, and we keep going, or they may say, all right, we'll agree to four, and then we'll go to the next step in the process.
Some of the reason, and I should have clarified that too, the reasoning for four and not fourteen is because Dr. Cox is offering a have-your-say meeting once a month to these staff, so for anybody to show up. So, that's going to always be available for that, and if we keep this to more of a formal setting, when it has to do with just things that are more directly appropriate.
I think you shared too, you know, just the sheer size of the committee.
Yeah.
That you get too many people, it becomes unwieldy, and if we have a committee of eight, four and four, then it can be a little more productive.
And initially, we'd even said three, but the thought of having a community member and a teacher, it just seemed like a nice level group to put together, some good input. But we'll have to see where it goes with them, obviously.
Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Walker.
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Are we still looking at having our thirty-minute at-the-board table this evening?
We can push it.
If we do, we're going to take a short break before we go to that thirty-minute timeframe.
Yeah, it's up to you. I mean, or it.
It doesn't, doesn't matter to me.
We're good.
Do it.
Okay, we're going to take a quick recess, and then we'll come back and get our at-the-board table.
It's pretty quick after that.
Yes.
Okay, the time is eight twenty-two, and we will call the meeting back to order and continue on with Agenda Item fifteen, at-the-board table. Dr. Cox.
All right, so tonight's at-the-board table is considering board priorities at-the-board table. And this discussion tool is divided into five parts. There's an imagining part, board member responses, the reasons, the superintendent's response, and, I guess there isn't a fifth. Interesting, next slide. So, I did not put this together, it came from the IASB, so we will credit them with fooling us on that first slide there. So, the introduction, what are the district's main priorities from the perspective of the people at your board table? This at-the-board table will help you think about that. So, why priorities? There's a limited amount of time for board work. You know that as board members. The board cannot learn about and provide support for everything, so an important part of board leadership is providing focus and direction for district work. Superintendent has a finite amount of valuable leadership time. It's important for the superintendent to hear the board talking about and coming to consensus around what it believes would provide the most value-added contribution to the district, in order that the superintendent can provide professional perspective to that discussion. There are limited district resources, we know that as well. As Garrison Clare, Financial Planning Services Director, likes to say, you can do anything you want, but you can't do everything you want. In other words, decisions have to be made based on board priorities. So, let's imagine. Let's imagine that you've been given a magic one-hundred-dollar bill that will produce amazing benefits for the Charles City Community School District. It will allow your district to make big strides in school improvement in a given area. It will buy you a great deal more than the actual amount in time, energy, materials, and motivation for good work, but there are strings attached, and aren't there always?
Yes.
So, here are the rules. This is individual work, do not discuss your choices at this time, and that's the first handout that I gave you. Rule number two, you must acknowledge that the great benefit in this area will only come at a cost to the other areas. For example, solid fiscal security might mean making cuts in programming or staff. It may mean delaying some purchases of or the updating of equipment. If you're about to visit the SBRC, the School Budget Review Committee, this priority still may have great appeal. If you already have a ten percent fiscal solvency ratio, perhaps not. Rule number three, you may spend all of your money in one place, or you may spend eighty dollars on one priority and twenty dollars on another. These are the only two options. The money may not go to more than two areas or be allocated in any other amounts other than the eighty-twenty split or to a single item. Rule number four, you may choose from among the following list of areas. Please do so individually, again, no collaborative work yet, and then be prepared to defend your allocation in two sentences. Refer to your district mission statement, which again, Jim read for us at the beginning of the meeting. Our mission is to engage, inspire, and empower students and staff in order to maximize learning. So, refer back to that as you prepare this defense. Note that you have the option of creating one new area, but only one. So, here are your choices. First one is an increase in course offerings and programming to better meet a wide variety of individual needs. Choice two, and this is the second sheet that you have, informed community engagement with and knowledge of the school district's needs and strengths. Choice three, solid fiscal security. Choice four is quality professional development focused on improving instruction. Choice five is infrastructure development, buildings, buses, equipment updating, from air conditioning to a zippy new track. Choice six, technology, increasing the use of technology to improve higher-level learning. And choice seven would be the one that you choose. So, we're going to give you about two minutes to look those over and decide, are you spending eighty dollars on one and twenty on another, or all one hundred dollars on one of those And then be prepared to share in two sentences while you've selected what you did. Start with the board president here in about ten seconds.
Ten's down then?
Well, I still see, someone was finishing up.
Well, for me.
All right. What have you selected, and what's your defense?
I'm going to split my hundred dollars.
All right.
Eighty dollars for course offerings for continued PBL, and twenty dollars for infrastructure, high school, and sports.
And your defense is?
As we continue to move forward, we need to expand our offerings and our project-based learnings. I've wrestled in the two-minute whistle countdown about where, which one was twenty percent and which one was eighty. And we need new and better and different infrastructure in order to accomplish the course offerings for continued project-based learning.
All right. Mr. Vice President.
I'm reading back in the rules here, I'm not sure I totally, I'm, I was going to go a hundred percent with the solid fiscal security, because I think. because I think if you get the, if you're on solid fiscal ground, it supports all of these other priorities on here, like we see with our district, you know, and all of these different things. When we're in good times of good fiscal security, we can support programming, we can support our building needs and infrastructure needs. But in here, it says that, for example, so I don't know if that example is, I don't think the example is relevant to our district, but.
Rule number two.
Is that the.
Solid fiscal security might mean making cuts in programming or staff.
Yeah.
So you've chosen.
Yeah. I think that solid fiscal security would support, you know, if you get yourself into, you know, a fiscally firm ground, then you would be able to have the programming that you need, but maybe that's not, maybe I'm looking at it in a different angle in that you're thinking that to get there, you have to cut. Is that what they're saying here that you would expect?
They'd ask for a better job or a better pension job.
Better. You think so?
Have to cut some teachers.
If you have best.
He's trying to have his magic hundred cover everything.
Have the fiscal.
Yep. I want my magic hundred to cover everything.
All right.
It's a magic hundred.
Alphabetically, we'll go to Director Frisbee.
Okay, well, I chose to spend eighty dollars of my money on quality professional development focused on improving instruction and the other twenty dollars on technology, increasing the use of technical to improve higher level learning and.
And why did you choose those two?
Well, very simple.
From the seven?
It's in our mission statement.
Okay.
Engage, inspire, empower students and staff in order to maximize learning.
All right. Director May Cumber.
I actually agree with Jim on, I put eighty dollars toward quality professional development focused on improving instruction. My other twenty went to increase in course offerings and programming to better meet a wide variety of individual needs.
And your defense?
I totally believe that if we have the best program and we are offering the best product taught by the best, everything else will fall into place. The students will be here, the students will come, students will stay here, the parents will be here, the families will be here, the community will see it. I think it'll all fall into place. Side note on that, I don't know if my answers would have been the same two years ago, is what it is today. That's my growth is in that, that I see that that is where I put our money.
And that's exactly the point of these at the board table exercises is just to keep providing that ongoing growth for board members. Board Secretary O'Brien.
Let me guess.
Actually, I'm going to surprise you. I would put a hundred dollars on the quality professional development focused on improving instruction because, as we heard from our TLC group, how important is, you know, getting staff trained makes such a huge difference, I think. And also because we're ready on solid footing, so I didn't have to put my money there.
Very good.
Very good.
What'd you say, Dr. Cox?
I think that comes later. So we have the board member responses. So we stated that, we were descriptive and showed how the choice relates to the mission. Good. Reasons, all right. So this one, you've had a chance now to hear from each other regarding some initial thinking about your priorities. The good news is that you do have resources that can be magic. Vice President Walker. The time, energy, and collective commitment of your district's staff is, to a focused board-endorsed priority, can work magic. I think we heard that just a moment ago out of Terry from the presentations earlier tonight. So can a focused, determined, supportive, and united school board. And here are some thoughts from the IASB staff on the listed priority areas. Now, Larry, can you click on increased course offerings? Yeah. Does it take you somewhere? And if, perfect. So we've had some of you choose to spend either twenty or eighty dollars on this. Many districts are struggling with ways to meet the changing and highly individualized needs of students. So if you chose to do this, district staff would like to meet those varied needs and sometimes feel restricted by a lack of program options. We've been expanding programming options across the district more significantly at the 512 Building than at the K-4, but you heard even a little bit of some of the things that at the elementary level that they'd like to do with literacy and math, reading workshop and writing workshop coming in the seventeen-eighteen school year. But certainly the strong increase in the number of AP courses, the PBL work that's going on, the interdisciplinary courses that have been introduced, there's been a lot, the Project Eighteen that's starting. So there's one area. Increasing use of technology. So the skill sets for life success are rapidly changing. We know that. The demands of the modern-day digital workplace require graduates who can think critically and work collaboratively in a technology and information-rich environment. Don't know if there are any additional thoughts on that? And we've, no.
You got to go back.
That's like one, four, and seven. How about two, three? Did it not take you back to the, go back one more? Nope? Okay. Well, there's in the, in the.
Oh.
Can you click on the return to reason slide? There we go. All right, try going back from there. Yeah. Informed community engagement. See if that'll take you to that slide. There we go. As long as Iowa schools remain community school districts, it will be important for their communities to understand the needs of the district so they can become involved in and supportive of changes in the system. Any district contemplating big-picture changes might consider this area. And we didn't have anybody select that for any dollar allocation. Did that shock you? Or does that shock you after seeing this from IASB?
If you put all your money into solid fiscal security, you could afford to employ a community engagement person.
If you've got successful students because your teachers are successful, you have a paper continually full of all the students' successes, so the community knows.
Along with massive exposure on social media, we're fine. We didn't need to put any money there. It's already there.
All right.
As Terry's answer says, we're on solid ground there, so we're just putting our money where we think we may.
There we go. Solid fiscal security. Let's try to hit that one next. So if district resources have been plummeting and needs have been escalating, the district may find itself scrambling for viability in any area. A solvency ratio below five percent and an unauthorized budget with a declining trend line are indicators of great need. And as Terry mentioned, you know, we do have a very solid solvency ratio, and so that isn't as much of a need or a reason that we could spend our magical hundred dollars in other areas. Quality PD, so that was cited by, I think, everybody, almost everybody. Teachers want, yeah, almost everybody. Teachers want to be catalysts for increased student learning. You heard that tonight through the presentations. You heard that at the last board meeting. Implementing ambitious student learning standards at Common Core or the Iowa Core, powerful teaching methods, and an ongoing assessment system that measures high-level student learning requires a strong professional development system. We've invested a lot of our teacher-quality money into really getting our staff additional opportunities to grow as professionals. Certainly, the work that the teacher leadership team is doing is enhancing that as well. All right. There we go. Technology. No, wait, we hit technology. And then no one had your choice, did they? All right, superintendent's response then should be the next one. Yeah. So now's your opportunity to ask your superintendent what he heard this evening and what differences and similarities emerge, choices to be made, et cetera. So I heard a lot of commonality around quality PD. And again, that would have been one that I would have selected either for eighty dollars or all one hundred dollars. And I probably, if I'd split it up, would have put it in to either increased course offerings or informed community engagement about district needs and strengths. I think we can never do enough to really educate and inform the community about what we're doing, but certainly having quality teachers in every classroom and that ongoing learning for them is really critical for us to meet our strategic plan goals. So conclusion, every dollar the board allocates, every minute the board spends discussing priority issues at the board table has the potential to make a significant difference, but you can't do everything. Use this discussion as a springboard to develop a board agenda that will have frequent updates on a priority area and ensure that you are preparing for a superintendent evaluation, which we just did tonight, with clear-cut priorities and indicators of progress that will fairly reflect this prioritization. So I heard you ask, Robin, for the PBIS team to come back mid-year at the middle school and let us know how we're doing. We certainly can put that down as an agenda item. You know, if you want to hear from the teacher leadership team at mid-year and at the end, we can do that as well. Professional learning opportunities, we've brought some people, some teacher teams here recently to talk to you about what they're doing, but we can always bring more to just share with you, you know, how is it going with the implementation of the big things that you hear about over the course of the school year too. So whether it's, again, that K-4 reading and writing workshop, whether it's some of the innovative work going on, we don't have to wait until next June to bring you that update. So, yeah, I think it was about twenty minutes, maybe.
Twenty minutes. Would you say, look at this list, though? I mean, if this, you know, we've, you know, not necessarily split them up in one-sixth as we're currently operating, but none of these are being, you know, left behind, in my opinion, would you say?
I wouldn't, no.
We've done, I think.
I mean, even though this is about, you know, you have to set one of these as a priority over another, you know, even though we haven't technically done that, in my opinion, we've been pretty successful in all these areas.
We found a smarter way to do the technology.
Yeah.
A more affordable way to get more technology into the hands of more students. We have been increasing course offerings and programming to meet more needs. Iowa Big North, I failed to mention as well earlier, that would be another one. Informing the community, we've been really intentional the past two and a half years on that. Solid fiscal security, we have that. Quality PD, continue to work on that. Infrastructure, we've got this brand-new facility here. We've got plans in the works for the high school, some improvements that will come to Lincoln and Washington. So you're right, we have not neglected any of these areas.
You should be very, as a district and the community as a whole.
And as a board.
And as, I'll take, okay. That's fine. I know right off the top of my head, I can think of districts who can't say that. So.
True.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Good job, community and staff and board and superintendent.
We've moved forward on a variety of fronts over the last few years, time, based upon all of these choices that we were given. From time to time, it's been suggested we had too many things on our plate. I would say no.
They're also interconnected, but you can't.
Yes, they're all interconnected.
You can't deal with one without dealing the other with the other.
So, very good. Thank you, Dr. Cox.
Five more credits.
Five more credits. We got to sign that.
Five more credits, too.
Agenda item sixteen is the superintendent's contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent's salary and benefits package increase of one point one nine percent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's salary and benefits package increase of one point one nine percent. Any other discussion from the board?
Just that this is the same percentage as the other administrative staff has received.
Okay.
And the teaching staff.
And the teaching staff.
Teaching staff, okay.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, roll call vote.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda item seventeen is the payment of second June bills. Because of trying to get the fiscal year completed, there will be as many bills as possible paid, and we will approve those bills then at our regular meeting in July. This is an informational item only. Any comments from Terry?
If we were to cancel a July seventeenth meeting.
Which we will.
A little too late to pay bills, you know, for monthly bills where you, we don't pay them until after you say it's okay. So we may have to either have a quick, short meeting.
Brief.
To approve bills prior to the twenty-fourth, which would be when you would prove them.
I'd be fine with that. I just am out of town the seventeenth for work. She's out of town seventeen.
We could look at having a Thursday or Friday morning before that.
Yeah. Just a quick.
Before that Monday, the seventeenth, to approve when you leave.
I leave on that Friday, so Thursday.
Thursday morning to pay bills.
July thirteenth.
Thirteenth, I'm gone that day.
There we go.
Paige can be the secretary for five minutes.
Paige can easily do that.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a look at dealing with that then. Because all we would need to do is receive the bill run a couple of days in advance and get together for five minutes to approve paying the bills.
Right.
Okay? And we could do that on that Thursday morning, the thirteenth.
As long as three of us can make it.
Yeah, as long as we can get there, we'll be fine. We're on to agenda item eighteen, consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as listed.
Can I ask any questions about anything on this?
No.
So I can't, I cannot make any comment on the substitute teacher pay.
No, because nobody asked for it to be pulled.
We did not know that, I did not know it was going to be on there until I saw.
No, thanks.
So we can't make any comments. And you don't care to know, all right?
That's the way our rules are. I understand.
I commented earlier, but since it was on the agenda, I had to wait until it appeared on the agenda.
We have a motion in a second? Yes?
The second was made by.
Roll call vote.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke.
Yes, motion carried four to zero. Agenda item nineteen, correspondence and miscellaneous. Do we have any correspondence? Important upcoming dates.
July twenty-fourth, we're planning an open house prior to the board meeting and it would be at the Transportation Center. And then the board meeting itself would be at the Transportation Center as well. So we would invite the public to come and see that. Anticipate it being open by then.
Confident it'll be open by then?
Yeah. And then, of course, two days later, RagBri is in town on July twenty-sixth.
And we're going to skip the July seventeenth for meetings?
Yeah. There's only three who we're planning to be here on the seventeenth, so.
Okay. And then we'll schedule a special board meeting on, who said it's the thirteenth?
Yeah.
In the morning to pay bills. Okay, if we have no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn.